Good evening. Call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda for the town council meeting, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, is public hearing A. To receive comments on ordinance twenty-four sixteen to annex plus or minus point eight acres located at or near sixteen twenty-one Lake Murray Boulevard Lexington County, TMS zero zero one nine nine eight zero two zero three nine and zero six three. Into rezone said property from C one neighborhood commercial, which is Lexington County, to CG general commercial. Any comments? Any public comments? I see no one signed up for public comments. Does anyone have anything to say about this? Hearing none, we'll move on to B. Receive comments on ordinance twenty-four seventeen to amend to article, an amendment to Article Two of the zoning ordinance as regards to the use table. Do I see or hear any public comments? None have signed up. Seeing none, hearing none. We'll move on to item C. To receive comments on ordinance twenty-four eighteen to establish an express business license for single-family residential subcontractors. Does anybody want to speak on this issue? Having no one signed up, hear none, see none. We'll move on to D. To receive comments on ordinance twenty-four nineteen to amend the code of ordinance Chapter eleven Rental Property Registration and Regulations. Anyone like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, hearing none. And now close the public hearing portion and we'll call the meeting to order for our council meeting. Pledge of allegiance, if you'd all stand for pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Feel the heads, please. Dear Lord, please guide us through these decisions that we make on behalf of the town. Please guide us in our support of our local first responders and our military who are out, many of them in harm's way. Guide us to help them, guide us to see them through, and guide us, most importantly, to keep your heart in our hearts. With your name, I do pray. Thank you, God. Good evening again, everybody. Welcome. Want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season. This is the meeting just before the big day and it's shocking to me that it's a week away, or give or take. It's just, it just come up quickly. So, again, thank you for being here. We're going to move on to the approval of the agenda, but I would like to make an amendment to that agenda. I would like to add, under executive session, another item, which would be for personnel reasons, to discuss personnel issues. If I could have a motion to my amendment?
Second.
Any other discussion about the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I'd like to go back to the original amendment. And, I'm sorry, the original approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned in second, any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Thank you. Next item up, reading of the minutes from November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it, thank you. Report of standing, administrative briefing. Courtney, what do you have for us?
Just a few, just a few updates. The Oaktree Strut met on December tenth and approved their two thousand and twenty-five schedule. They've been assigning task areas and working on their budget for the two thousand and twenty-five festival. They hope to have that presented to you by February. Planning commission did not meet in December, but they did have a training session yesterday along with BZA to get their continuing education credits. And they both approved their two thousand and twenty-five schedules as well. Events committee met on December twelfth. They are discussing planning a two thousand and twenty-five Christmas parade. They also finalized some details to the chili cook-off that'll be in January, on January twenty-fifth, and they approved their two thousand and twenty-five schedule. And then, just a few notes from staff. We're working on our classification and compensation study. We're continuing, continuing to collaborate with Archer's Group. We hope to have some findings in early January. They've actually been shipping us some, some stuff this week. We did put out the wayfinding and signage RFQ. That is due back January tenth, I believe. And so, once we get those back, we'll evaluate them and present them to council. We've been finalizing contracts for the Irma concert series, which will be April twenty-fifth, May second, and May ninth. And then, we're working with the planning group on securing the sponsorships for that concert series. And lastly, the border skate park event. We finalized their contract for the event. It is scheduled for March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Friday, Saturday, at Ross Creek Skate Park. And then, a final note, we will be closed, Town Hall will be closed next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, and January first for New Year's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the report? Next item up is the update on the Central Midlands Council of Governments and the annual I am on the executive board as the mayor here on the council of governments, Midlands Council of Governments, and there is so little time to bring people up to what's really going on. And so, rather than have a work session to update my fellow council, I thought I'd do it in open session here, because everybody needs to hear this kind of stuff. And one of the things that your elected officials should do well is network with other elected officials and understand how things work and how things work statewide and nationwide. And I for one am never stop learning in this role. And these are the kinds of conferences and meetings that make me a better businessman, better mayor, and a better person. But some of these things, I just wanted to share with the folks, so they know we're all concerned with infrastructure, we're all concerned with, with safety and highway improvements, crash information, all those things. So I put up a couple of things and it ended up being three slides. Frankly, it started when I did it on my own. It was about six or seven slides, so I did cut a lot out, because I didn't want to take a whole lot of time. But I'm not going to read all this to you, but we had the keynote speaker of that conference was Justin Powell, who's the new Secretary of Transportation. And the ten, everything that the COG does, and a lot of people don't understand that, everything the COG does is five to ten to fifteen years out. The things that you see happening now from an infrastructure standpoint were worked on well before my time on the COG, right? Were worked on ten, fifteen years ago. The widening of Broad River Road, the infrastructure improvements to the interchanges into I-26, all those things. Those have all been worked on prior. And so, one of the things was the fact that there are six billion dollars in contracts out there right now to improve the infrastructure of this state. Up from a billion ten years ago. And the General Assembly is helping. They've put over four billion in the roads and one billion in the past three years. It's direct to infrastructure. Without the General Assembly pushing money to the Highway Department, to DOT, to the COGS, these things are not going to get done. One of the other things I took out of that was the bridge, bridge issue. We have over eight thousand bridges in South Carolina, and seventy-five percent of them are over sixty years old. The General Assembly provided two hundred million over the past few years, but that doesn't even cut it. One of the other documents in there, one of the other factoids in that was that if by two thousand and fifty, we wouldn't be halfway through repairing these road, these bridges that are out there. That's how many bridges are out there. So, we have a bridge crisis in this state. The other thing that I took out of this was the fact that we have wrecks all the time, single vehicle driving off the road. But the DOT experts, they don't call them wrecks, they don't call them crashes, they call them roadway departures. Now, you know, that sounds to me like I just pulled off the road to, you know, get a cup of coffee or something, but no, this is roadway departures. Flying off the road, usually single vehicles only. There's over a thousand of them in the past year. Fifty-five percent of those are single car wreck, fifty-five percent of those are roadway departures. No collisions, none of that. The other thing I came out of that was with rural road safety, and we are severely lacking in that. Our DOT has crash statistics on every intersection that you drive through on a daily basis. That is amazing to me. And so, the question then is, why do we hire? And I asked this question at the conference and didn't really get a good answer, and I'll give you the answer I got. Why do we have to hire expert outside engineers for every major thoroughfare improvement that gets done? Consulting engineers? And, which drags a project on for eight months to a year, just to do these, this engineering? When DOT has all this information? And the reason is, we need federal money. The government requires you to have these third-party engineers so that you can get these federal funds. So, very interesting statistic. We, the other key issue is that we are the fastest-growing state, no matter how you shake it, in this country. And you can go to any demographic that you want, any analysis or any source, and we're going to be in the top four, whatever analysis you look at. We are growing, and by two thousand and forty, sixty percent of this population will be over sixty-five years old. And I tie, I put that in there, because a lot of the wrecks happen in rural roads that are not lit, rural intersections that are not lit. And guess what's not in that six billion? Lighting for rural roads. Right? I mean, this is, this is amazing stuff, good and bad. I'm giving you the good, I'm giving you the bad. So that's, so over sixty percent of this population is over sixty-five. It will be, by two thousand and forty. And then, the other thing is growth of technology, changing technology. EV and hybrid vehicles, only three point six percent right now, and they're growing at twenty-two percent per year. Here's the kicker. Electric cars don't provide gas taxes. So where does all the gas tax money go? Goes into our infrastructure. And South Carolina is the lowest fee to register a hybrid or electric vehicle. Sixty dollars is the annual fee, compared to a three hundred dollar annual average for a gas car. So, and you can tell, so there's got to be some work done on that. And those are the kinds of issues that we're looking at. But the, the COG does great work. I'm proud to be involved in the COG, and I'm open to talk to anybody about what, what goes on. My only frustration with that is it's big government, right? It moves very slowly. And a matter of fact, I think they're having tomorrow night, the COG is hosting, the COG is hosting a drop-in session on congestion in Lexington County from four thirty to seven, I believe, at the Lexington Chamber of Commerce. And it's going to be a public presentation for people to see and how they're going to deal with congestion in Lexington County. Those of you who might live in Lexington County might want to go to that, even if you live here, you might want to go to that. Frankly, I'm more concerned about what happens to congestion in the town of Irma, which crosses over into Lexington County. So, we got a lot of work to do, but we're doing it and we're moving. It's slow, but we're moving. Two more quick updates, again, that I think are important. Couple of weeks ago, I was at the annual municipal association mayor's lunch. We have two hundred and seventy-one mayors in the state of South Carolina. Two hundred and seventy-one. How many do you think showed up for the lunch at the Palmetto Club a couple of weeks ago? Well, rhetorical question, and I don't expect you to answer. Less than fifty. And so, what is the bonus and what is the benefit of that? The big benefit of that is the fact that I get to learn and glean from other mayor's issues, other community issues. It's kind of like a safe haven, where you can talk to your compatriots and you can, you know, you can talk about what's, what's going on in your town or your city. I had the pleasure of sitting next to the mayor of Greer, who'd been there for twenty-four years. This was his last term. In a one-hour conversation, I just gleaned a tidbit of what that man knows. So, those are the kinds of things that we need to do. And we had the Secretary of Commerce, was our speaker, Harry Lightsey, very, very valuable information, and I asked him a couple of pointed questions, which he couldn't answer. All-around infrastructure, highway improvements, all of those things. We have the fastest-growing, we are the seventh-largest port in Charleston, South Carolina in the country, and it's one of the fastest-growing. And fortunately, or unfortunately, a lot of that money is being put into the highway system from the port to the upstate. But when they get off the highway, where are they coming? They're coming out to Dutch Fork Road, they're coming out to Broad River Road, they're coming out to Highway One in Lexington, three seventy-eight. We have to have, it's like we get there and it's, it's, once we get off the highway, we're into the, we're into the congestion. So, secondary and rural roads need a lot of work. And again, it was my opportu, opportunity to talk to the, the Secretary of Commerce, which was really very good. My last update, I had the cho, the, the wonderful, I made a great decision. Peg and I were invited to the, the holiday concert by Fort Jackson, the commanding general there, on Sunday night. And I urge all of you, it is a free concert Friday night, this Friday night, at the Kroger Center. It's free. This army band, the two hundred eighty-second army band is absolutely incredible, absolutely incredible. So, I urge all of you to go Friday night, if you're, if you open between seven and eight thirty, nine o'clock, to go see that band. I was stunned when I found out it was free, right? Absolutely free. So, of course, I am now making arrangements to bring that band back to Irma, because they're unbelievable. The kids, the, Peg and I were, we just, we were just enthralled. It was fantastic. So, that's my updates. I'm sorry to bore you all, but I don't do this often, but it's, sometimes you just need to know what's going on and some of the things that are important to us. All right, that being said, we're going to go to new in-town businesses. Mayor Pro Tem Signature, will you let us know?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. New in-town businesses, Lake Murray Mitsubishi, Wood Springs Suites, T and P Automotive, Ruth Straight Ellis Counseling, Firm Roots Counseling, All Us Towing, and Underdog Digital. Welcome to town.
Thank you. Welcome to town. Always excited to see these lists grow. Next item up, consideration of communications. I think we're all going to step down front, if you would.
All right, this is the time that we always announce our business of the month, and I would like to have Craig and Kathy Hall come on down. Okay, these are the wonderful folks who own Kathy's Creations, a stakeholder of this town. And I wanted to say this, present to Kathy's Creations in recognition of being the small business of the month for the town of Irma, December two thousand and twenty-four. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You know what you do, though? Would you like to give us a, the elevator's huge?
We started twenty years ago out of our home, and about sixteen years ago, we moved into, on Woodrow Street, right near the old Domino's, and we were there for about five or six years, and then we moved across the street into what used to be the old Carolina Wings. And that shopping center had nothing in it, pretty much, and right now, it's a hundred percent occupancy. So it's really great to see. You have to see, before I have businesses drive, and attract people. We do embroidery, laser engraving, decals, printed shirts. I mean, if you want something personalized, we can do it. And, you know, we've been doing it for twenty years now. We have, you know, we do everything in-house and have great, quick turnaround and have a lot of great people that work for us. And we're in a great town.
Thank you so much. This is, these folks are the anchor to a revitalized shopping center that started some twenty-six years ago or so, give or take. So, thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Have a great day. Okay, next up, we're, we want to call on the South Carolina Philharmonic. Robin Halliburton, if you would.
Yes, sir.
This is your idea, so. I'm just giving you the venue.
Earlier this year, the, for the South Carolina Philharmonic, and earlier this year, we created an outreach program, and our vision was to provide a series of free concerts to a community in, in the Midlands, to be able to provide concerts for everyone, in the hospitals, in assisted living, in the schools, in the library, you name it. And I live in Irma, and I said, well, how about we do it in Irma? There are really good folks there. So we did it in Irma, and this was in April, so we had an entirely long series of performances. We had over three thousand people that attended thirteen different performances, and this town embraced this idea with open arms, and we could not be more thankful for, for that opportunity. So, and, and this guy out here really spearheaded it. I mean, everybody, every town council member, I mean, how busy? You showed up. I mean, everybody, the staff, it was really amazing. So thank you so much. So on behalf of the, the board of the South Carolina Philharmonic, we wanted to present the town of Irma with the Partner Award, and this is for the highest ideals of sustained support and service for the town of Irma. So thank you so, so much.
Thank you. I'm going to hand this over before I drop it.
Warrior cow, they'll tell me that.
Oh, that's beautiful. That's beautiful. That's it.
It, it was a true pleasure, and it was, it is still spoken about often in this town. I'm asked when the next one's rolling out and was this truly a pilot program? And the answer was soon, and yes, it was. So, it, it made a big impact in this town, a lot, especially with the kids and with our senior citizens. So, thank you so much. Okay, next up, we have the school showcase. Vernon, are you here? Dutch Fork Middle School, come on down. You have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Danielson, and the Irma Town Council members for the invitation and the opportunity to come share about the great things that are happening at Dutch Fork Middle School. I've had the honor of serving Dutch Fork Middle School for the past, I guess this is my eighth year, and there's a lot of great things I could share. But one of the things that happens that is most meaningful, and, you know, you kind of get the feels when you think about it, is our Unified Championship, our Unified Champions. And I brought an entourage with me, because a lot of people take part in creating what we call our Unified Champion School. And what basically is, is we've got a, it's sports-based, and a lot of times, people relate to it with the Special Olympics. And that's where the, the champion part comes from, but we extend it beyond just Special Olympics and athletic events. We try to make that an everyday part of our school. And in doing so, you know, our students with intellectual disabilities and our, and our students that are their peers are able to come together and lead and partner. So, we call them buddies. So, we call them Unified Buddies. And at Dutch Fork Middle School, our seventh-grade students at the end of the year are able to apply to be a Unified Buddy during their eighth-grade year. And they'll all be placed in the same homeroom, and then, our students with intellectual disabilities are also in a different homeroom, and they pair up every single day. Our students will also go to adaptive art, adaptive PE, and their buddies will come and join them. I've had students finish lunch and then, can I go see my buddy now? So, it's one of those things where they're very eager to help out and, and just really pair with each other. So, we've got some pictures of our, our recent Special Olympics bowling, I think that was the first picture. But, um, I'm not going to hog all the conversation, okay, because a lot of the people behind me are part of this. I'm going to share with Ms. Carol Crosby, she is our, one of our special ed teachers, and Ms. Lisa Gary is another one of our special ed teachers. Together, they each have a homeroom, so I'll let them take over from here. And then, our student, we had a few students, some, there's something going around town. Some kids are getting sick and teachers are falling sick, so we weren't able to have everybody here today. But we've got all stakeholders, teachers, students, and parents that can share a little bit more about what we do with our Unified Champions.
I'm Carol Crosby, I'm one of the special ed teachers at Dutch Fork Middle School, and I have been a part of Unified Buddies for the past four years. Started the program with another teacher a couple of years ago. It's been a great pleasure to see the camaraderie and just the building of relationships of the general ed students and the special ed students, and just the joy that it creates just seeing both the general ed students and special ed students coming together and building those relationships, and the excitement that they both have to be together in the school, community.
I'm Lisa Gary, and I teach seventh and eighth multi-categorical special education. I have the den with our general education students that buddy up with our students in Ms. Crosby's room. And it's, it's my first year at Dutch Fork Middle School, so it's been a cool experience to see how the school just integrates all students and puts them together, and it's just fostered a loving environment and been really cool to witness, I think, the growth too, just in not only the students that are in my homeroom, but also the students that are, you know, they're learning as well from students that they're interacting with, and that's just been very special to be a part of.
My name is Corin Martin, and I am a student that helps out the buddies, and I just, it's really fun to see how they interact with, with us, and they're really sweet. Like, they, they love, they give us hugs. They're really good huggers. They're really good huggers.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Shelton. I am the parent of a child with special needs. He has Down syndrome. And Ms. Crosby is actually his teacher, and Corinne is one of his Unified Buddies. We were lucky enough to be able to do our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade year at Dutch Fork Middle School, so we get to do this three times. So it's pretty cool. But my son, how this program benefits him is, is just beyond measure. And it also benefits the general education students that volunteer their time to go and do this as well. Because once these eighth graders, Corinne and his friends, get over to the high school, and by the time my son gets to the high school, he's already got some friends. He's already got some cool people to hang out with. He's already got people that know him and that are going to give him his high fives and his fist bumps. They're going to look out for him, they're going to continue to be nice and friendly and hang out with him. So it's really a win-win for everybody. So it really creates lifelong relationships, in my opinion. One of the Unified Buddies from last year, she still comes over to the house. She'll call, hey, can I come hang out with Carter? I go get her, and she comes over. So it does create lifelong relationships that otherwise wouldn't happen if this program didn't exist. So.
Thank y'all so much for doing this.
It just makes my heart happy. Y'all have a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Alice LaBock. I am the Dutch Fork Special Education Placement Chair, and I'm just honored to be able to be a witness and to observe all these Special Olympians and the Unified Buddies. And I am going to just read a quote from one of our students, or one of our Unified Buddies. Being in Unified Buddies is something that I have so deeply enjoyed. It has taught me so many new things and allowed me to create strong bonds with kids in the program. I love getting to work and talk with all of them. Being in the Unified Buddies has also helped influence my choices for my future career. I'm so glad that I was accepted into this program and hope to continue to do this in high school. This is one, Kara S., from one of our Dutch Fork Middle School Unified Buddy students. So thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
And thank you once again. Our main goal with this is to, as it says on the, on the screen, foster a culture of inclusiveness for our students, parents, and our teachers. We appreciate your time listening this evening.
What a great program. It's so, it's just, I don't know even know that I have the words for feeling right now how you've, you've embraced the special needs and Special Olympics community. So it's, which is dear to my heart. If you know my background, you'll know that it is. So thank you so much. That's, that's, that's great. I will be coming by to see you.
We, it just, a continuation of the wonderful schools we have here and what, what we do with our youth. We tend to forget that. Up next up, Dr. Waldman, Community Connections. Let's keep it under 30 minutes tonight.
I'll try.
Okay.
Coming up on Thursday, December 19th, from 12 to 2:00 p.m., we will have the Ermo Delivering Joy Event here in, in this building. We will have holiday food boxes, hot meals, a resource fair, and fellowship for all who join. So if you are in need this season, or if you know of any families in need, please invite them to attend again Thursday, December 19th, from 12 to 2:00 p.m. As Mayor Danielson previously mentioned, the Midlands Winter Carol Concert will be performed by the 282nd Army Band. This will be at the Coger Center on Friday, December 20th, at 7:00 p.m. Again, this is a free event and open to all.
Did I say how fabulous that was?
You did. On Saturday, December 21st, there will be another free microchipping event for Lexington County residents. This one will be at the Swansea Magistrate Office. This is for dogs only, from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. You can also get vouchers for spay and neutering there. Again, this is at the Swansea Magistrate, Charlie Rast Road in Swansea. On January 11th, Lexington Richland School District Five will be holding a hiring event. This will take place at Ermo Middle School from 8:30 to 11:00 a.m. If you'd like to participate, participate, please register at www.lexrich5.org/d5careers. On Saturday, January 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, there will be a session called Block Kids. It's a building competition for students in grades K through six. This will be held at the Girl Scout Leadership Center in Columbia. You need to register for this event. To register, please contact sevans@scdevelopmentllc.com. Should be on this second slide here. Again, this event is from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and registration is required. There's a limit of 100 spots available. On Saturday, December, sorry, January 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in Moore Park, the Ermo Chili Cook-Off will take place. Keep an eye out for more details. But again, if you're interested in being a chili cooker or participating, please mark, mark your calendar, save this date, and look for more, more in front to come. The South Carolina Young Filmmakers Project Competition is open. This is for all middle school and high school students. In order to apply for this, you need to go to indygrants.org for more information. Your entry will be due by February 10th, 2025. And again, this is competition for cash and prizes. And that concludes the Community Connections.
Thank you, Dr. Waldman. I would also be remiss if we'd, under this section, if we did not offer our hearty congratulations to the Dutch Fork High School football team for winning their third state championship in a row, and I think eight out of nine, some ungodly number like that. We will be honoring them hopefully at our next meeting, Courtney, if you would put that down. I also want to congratulate our own Ermo High School football team for going the distance. They, they lost the state championship game on the last second field goal, as close as you can get to winning, so they're winners to us. So we'd like to do something special for them to, Courtney, I'll, we'll talk about that. But congra, again, athletes, students, smart, intelligent, working with each other. We've got a great school community, so this is, this is a special place.
Okay, presentation by citizens. I don't have anybody signed up. Does anybody have anything they'd like to address the council with? Or do you have something else?
I had a consideration of communication.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. I, this mic's a little, didn't pick it up. I just wanted, in, in the effort of people not having to be at the meeting to be heard, I wanted to share some things that were brought to me this, in the last couple of weeks. One, an issue with drainage on Ermo Drive at the entrance to Hill Creek, which has been a disaster for years, and we're trying to work with, or the Lexington County Council on that. I had a number of complaints about the QT and the exit out of QT that's not at the signal, that there should be a right turn only sign there. And I, for the life of me, I can't figure out why there isn't already, because people are turning left and having accidents. I don't know. And it's hard to turn left. It's hard to turn left. I don't know why. And then, of course, you know, I'm always behind the person that wants to turn left, but that's not my complaint. And then I had a complaint about animal control as it relates for Lexington County. A resident who was concerned about their neighbor's dog that looked bare bones and appeared to be mistreated, and we had to escalate that with one of the county council I think that's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you. I think maybe moving forward, Courtney, one of the things we might want to add to the agendas going forward, under consideration with zone heading, what do you want to call it? Yeah, Resident Communications, that we can actually respond to some of the, some of the things that we were directed and asked to do. That would be a great thing, so we can at least get it there.
Current public comments, are current public comments open for any topic or just the agenda items?
Just the agenda items. Anybody want to speak? You have, is it an agenda item or is it open? We'll come back to you if you want to do it later. Yes, ma'am. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we're going to move on. Unfinished business. We're going to go to item A. Second and final reading, reading of ordinance 2416 to annex point, I think I've already read this once, right? I feel like I'm going on and on here. To annex point eight acres located at or near 1621 Lake Murray Boulevard, Lexington County, TMS 001998, 02039, and 063, and to rezone said property from C1 Neighborhood Commercial, that's in Lexington County, to CG General Commercial, which is town of Ermo, zoning. This will annex the two lots adjacent to the BP Station at the corner of Lake Murray and Nursery Road, including the large blue building that fronts at 1621 Lake Murray Boulevard. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, I open for discussion. Any discussion?
Yeah, just briefly. So this, this property is going to come into the town, and that's part of our motion today. And then the other one is to set the zoning, which is what's allowed to be used on that property. And I'm in favor.
And I'm in favor of it being general commercial because it's on Lake Murray and the general commercial area. So that makes sense to me, and I'm in favor.
Anything else? Okay. Hearing no other comments. Lisa, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Thank you all. Second, item B, second and final reading of ordinance 2417, an amendment to Article Two of the zoning ordinance as regards to the use table. This is brought to us by staff. This will allow professional services, support services, and gyms in the neighborhood commercial districts. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, I open for discussion. Councilman?
I'm in favor. It just gives a little more flexibility for that kind of business.
A lot of people like to walk to the gym. Been walking distance. Anything else? Having, hearing no more discussion, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Next item up, second and final reading of ordinance 2418 to establish and express business license for single-family residential subcontractors, brought to us by the staff. This will establish a separate business license, which covers all residential subcontractors under one license. Electrical plumbing and HVAC subcontractors will still need their individual business licenses. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, having been appropriately motioned, I would open the floor with the general comments that this is, this is a licensing issue that we've been missing for a long time. This is a requirement for the, the general home builders who do have pole licenses for their, their smaller subcontractors to have a license in the town. We're not going to run around chasing painters and drywallers and all of those folks. But anybody, I like to think of it as anybody who can burn the house down, they need to get their own business license, right? That would be the HVAC folks. So Courtney, Doug, does that pretty much sum it up?
It does, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman?
I just want to say thanks to the staff for bringing this to our attention and putting it forward.
Yeah. Okay, no other comments. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Thank you. Next, item D, second and final reading of ordinance 2419 to amend the code of ordinance Chapter 11, Rental Property Registration and Regulations. This is brought to us by staff, specifically Doug. The ordinance changes the required dates for rental registration, clarifies offenses and violations, and creates an occupational inspection request. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, we'll open for discussion, and I would, I would point to Doug if he was, wants to give us the brief synopsis on this, rather than hear me ramble.
Sure. We, so we've had a rental registration ordinance in place for a number of years now, and what this change does is twofold. One, it makes scheduling easier for staff. Historically, rental registration, the period for that has mirrored the business license open registration period, which makes it difficult for staff to aid each other. And so by dividing this and making this more April through June, it allows two of our staff members to help each other for business license and then pivot over to rental registration later in the spring. And secondly, it kind of clarifies some of the ordinance, some of the, the rules around rental that we did not have before, and also provides a way for renters to request an inspection of their property if they feel that the property they are receiving from the landlord does not meet state law in terms of safety and things of that nature.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, hearing none. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Okay, next up, we're going to go to new business. Item A, approval to accept the South Carolina Department of Public Safety Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of 132,434 to purchase and upgrade in-car police radios. This is brought to us by the Chief of Police in the Police Department. This is a 90-10 grant that will cost the town 10%, roughly $14,175. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, is there further discussion?
None, other than thank you IPD staff for working on the grant.
Talk about our early Christmas gift.
All right. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Thank you all. Item B, approval to contract with Bowman Engineering to perform engineering services in the amount of $10,500 to prepare cost estimates for beautification improvements to signalized intersections along section, along South Carolina Highway 60 and St. Andrews Road. This brought to us by the staff. And Courtney, the scope of the work studies for, includes studies for landscaping, hardscaping, striping, signage, masked armed sign poles, and appurtenances. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, I would open the discussion by saying that we have been working on this for months, literally, to just get it to this point. And this is where government doesn't move at the rate that this mayor wants it to move at. So this is all about beautification and modernizing the entries into Ermo, right? With, I think, you know, those of you unaware what these masked arms are, go to Lexington, go drive around, you'll see them all coming up, and it gets rid of this, these, these ugly lights and interchanges. So that's where we're going on this. This is just the beginning of what we think is, you know, a couple of year process, hopefully not. Courtney, have anything to add? Courtney, have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a few notes. We recently passed our comprehensive plan, which, as you all know, we took a lot of public input to create that comprehensive document, and one of the things that we extracted out of there was the continued investment in the public realm, and that's where this type of project falls. You know, streetscaping, hardscaping, landscaping, I think will help beautify our town. Ironically, I was in South Congaree last week and noticed that they've got some of those projects going on over there, new masked arms, and it looks so much cleaner when you get all those wires out of the air and you get them underground, and you get nice, clean poles and not these wood poles that, or even these metal poles that DOT is putting up. So this, like the mayor said, is the first step. The Bowman Engineering Group, who we recently contracted with to do our traffic impact analysis, they're fully qualified to do this study as well, and they provide us a cost of $10,500. Obviously, we've vetted them the past few months when selecting them to do our trap, other traffic studies, so they're more than qualified and they should be able to turn this around pretty quickly. The goal is to have a deliverable of a document that shows multiple intersections, I think we've got 12 slated for a study, and even piloting one of them on a full workup, so we can build a cost and understand what we're truly dealing with, if we've got to purchase right away, if, you know, what kind of designs are we looking at for these intersections. So we would pilot one of them to figure out what all the bugs are, so then we can scope out the rest of the 11 other intersections.
Well said. Councilman?
I'm just curious if there's going to be a public input component before we commit to the project itself?
I'm not sure, I mean, it's not part of the deliverable, so they'd be working directly with staff through our comprehensive plan and through our own zoning ordinances about what they would design. I would think that it's pretty standardized at this point.
From the beautification side as well?
Yes, so I mean, that's, they've showed us some mockups of, you know, kind of what they can do, and I think it would fit well within our current kind of models that we have out there.
The other thing I think is important to point out why we're spending the money, which is, to that end, we want it to look good, and Whit has done an incredible job as best as he can, but this is the kind of thing that where we need to go for, to some experts, and better to spend, you know, 10 grand now and have a finished product that looks good, than save $10,000, you know, cut off our noses spider face kind of thing. So I am in favor.
Right? Councilman?
Is, is this contract for a flat fee of $10,500 or is it not to exceed?
It's not to exceed that.
Okay, do we need to put that into our?
It's in the contract.
Okay.
I think that's on page, the front page of the contract, very last line, fee not to exceed $10,500 without authorization, and then from there, it's an hourly basis.
Thank you.
Again, this goes back to the very initial steps, and we're going to need this analysis so we know what we're dealing with. Also, if we go after federal funds, we're going to need this analysis, this independent study, right? I mean, it's, this is all tied together. Okay, comments?
You mentioned 11 intersections, are we eventually looking to address all 11 or we're just looking at 11 to see which ones to address?
This contract will have them scope out all 11, give us some design elements for actually all 12. So it's down St. Andrews Road, down Lake Murray Boulevard, and I think we have maybe Highway 6, one or two out on Highway 6. So everything coming from I-26 down Lake Murray Boulevard all the way to Nursure Road, everything coming down St. Andrews Road from Crossroads Middle School all the way to Thames Valley, and then Irma Drive, Highway 6, and that corridor. We didn't include Broad River Road at this point because it's currently under construction plans for the widening project, but we would maybe readapt once we start seeing more finalized plans that they have. So the study is basically to analyze all of those intersections, identify all the hurdles that we may encounter, is there right of way that's got to be purchased, is it possible to do what we want to do at those intersections, and then from there, build some cost analysis on how much it would cost to do them. Obviously, we don't want to just do one intersection, it would look kind of silly, so we wanted to get the study done to make sure that if we do start executing this project, what are we looking at in terms of cost and how can we make a timeline so we can implement this in our budgets moving forward? Thank you.
Else? Okay. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Thank you. Item C, approval of letter of credit for Bickley Station. This will approve the acceptance of a letter of credit in the amount of $298,321.35 to guarantee the construction of unfinished infrastructure at Bickley Station and allow for approval of the bonded plat. Is, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, I'll open for discussion, and, I'm going to let him address. Courtney, would you like to explain this? I could go on for hours with this very subject.
Yeah, just kind of in a nutshell, Bickley Station is ready to start construction of the homes over there. One of the first stages though is they have to get a bonded plat. Part of our development requirements is that they bond the infrastructure, i.e. the roads and stormwater system. The main reason for that is if they walk away from this project, we can execute that letter of credit and actually go in and finish the roads and infrastructure on our own. So this is kind of the, one of the steps they've got to execute with us. We've got to retain that letter of credit during the duration of the build and even until acceptance of those roads and stormwater systems into a maintenance system, so in this case Lexington County's maintenance system. It's got to be built to their standards and accept it before we would release that letter of credit. At that point, then they can get a final plat and file that with the Register of Deeds And one final comment, the cost analysis is, is 125% of the estimate, that's by our ordinance, we require, we know that these projects take sometimes years, and the cost estimate that they get today may not be the same cost in three years from now, so that's why that number is inflated at 125%.
And to, to ask the question, that, that analysis, the dollar amount is fully vetted by hybrid engineering?
It was reviewed by hybrid, it's prepared by a engineer, obviously it's an engineer that they select, but engineers still have a code of ethics to be truthful, but they present that, we do review that, Hybrid Engineering actually did the review for us.
Along those same lines, Mayor, Courtney, is, I mean, I can see the document here from Wells Fargo, did anyone contact, like, have we done our due diligence in terms of that letter of credit?
Yeah, I actually sent an email today to do some verifying as well, I mean, it looks like an authentic document, and Wells Fargo is obviously a huge corporation, I've been unable to independently verify, but it, yeah, so the mayor asked the question about the signature on the page, and I'm trying to get some clarification on that. A lot of the other banks that we've used in the past on letters of credit, you know, they give me the branch manager or the local rep, in this case, I haven't gotten that, but I'm still working to get that clarification.
And this is a single reading, right?
It is.
Okay.
Obviously, we're not going to release any kind of building permits or any other permits until these things are fully verified, but, so there is a safeguard in place to your question.
Any other comments? I would recommend that you flip this back on to the builder and get them to get their banker to call you.
Yeah, we have been, we've been in emails.
I should have figured that, but, okay. All right, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Thank you. Approval, next item, approval of the 2025 Town Council meeting schedule, brought to us by the staff, would I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, discussion, I will open by saying this is not the place where we hack every, everything up because I got a birthday the day before or the day after, so we've all had a chance to look at this. Any comments or constructive criticism, anything there? No? Call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much, Lisa. With that, I'd like to turn the attention to Councilman Mayor Protem Sickinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, technically, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by citizens, this one's going to be a presentation by this citizen, because I, I want to do a little bit of unplanned recognition here. Today I was on Facebook and I saw a, the wrapped is kind of popular now, you know, wrapping up the year, your numbers, how many songs did you listen to, you know, all of that, but there is an Irma wrapped, and I really want to highlight the work done by Danielle, our communications manager, who came in like a whirlwind and really did some incredible things, so I'm just going to go through these quickly. Our Facebook following grew 56% this year, now over 11,000. Our Facebook page was visited 57,000 times this year compared to, which is 100%, over 100% increase. An organic Facebook reach of 350,000 people, and our town website was viewed 90,000-plus times, which is 35,800 individual users. A lot more data behind that, but just some highlights to show the results of the effort of Danielle, and really appreciate it, and of course, doing more than just communications, somehow figuring out the mics and live streaming too, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, that goes without saying, she's just done a tremendous job. I don't know any of those statistics, but I can tell you she's done a great job, and continues to do a great job. Okay, presentation by citizens, item 12, I have one name signed up, Jessica, I think it's Blake, maybe? Yes?
Hello, my name is Jessica Blake. I'm a domestic violence survivor, which has led me to become a protective parent, certified conscious parenting coach, and, and domestic violence child family court advocate. I'm here to talk about after survivors get safe and get their children safe. During the divorce and custody proceedings, family court often sends children back to the abusive parent. 58,000 children every year is returned to an abusive parent, unsupervised. This number is continuing to rise each year. Coercive control, sorry, there is more to abuse than just physical abuse, and the family court does not honor this. There is coercive control, this is where abuse starts. There's financial abuse, mental, emotional abuse. There is an escalation, there's an abuse cycle, and in the escalation of leaving, this escalates the abuse to the most dangerous time, commonly, but I would say that family court and divorce and custody proceedings are the most dangerous time for a survivor and their children. Once a survivor gets free, then the, the abuse then transfers to post-separation abuse, and then this abuse is used from the legal system and family court. Typically, there is something called parental alienation, and if this is claimed, this is typically used to claim, to counterclaim domestic violence. When this is done, the protective parent typically loses, 70% of the time loses custody of their child. Once they get sent into parental alienation in line, there is something called reunification And reunification therapy is not mental health therapy, this is therapy to reunify, reunite the abusive parent with the child, even when the abusive parent has not admitted to the abuse or is actively denying it. Parental alienation is not typically proven, and when this is, when this is claimed, all abuse is either ignored or minimized and brushed away. In further situations, there is something called reunification camps, where children are then sent across state lines to supposed therapy, overnight therapy, for the shortest period, four days. During this period, they are not allowed contact with the safe parent, they are removed from their custody, and they are sent over state lines, and this has happened in South Carolina, it happened in Columbia, Richland County in 2018, two children were sent to Montana. And, and, and what healthy divorce would a parent be okay with their child being sent across state lines for supposed therapy? And I'm very sorry, I missed a part, parental alienation was created by Robert Gardner in 1985, and he created parental alienation to counter sexual abuse charges and in family custody cases. His, his research was based on biased clinical observations, it was not scientifically backed, and it has also been discredited by, just to name a few, the APA, the WHO, the World Health Organization, and the American Medical Association.
Jessica, can I interrupt you just there?
Yes.
It's my bad, I should have said you only have three minutes.
Okay, sorry.
We've let you go well over that because it's an important subject. I would ask if you would like to talk to any of us after the meeting, to please sit tight, we'd like to have a conversation with you or whatever we can do to help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, and she can email any literature to us, and we can make sure that gets out.
Yeah, will you, someone reached out to her when we go into executive session? Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have anybody else signed up, and I'm sure, is there anybody else who wants to make a presentation to the citizens, from the citizens?
I'm here to support.
The microphone.
Can you, can you?
Name and address, please.
Sorry, I'm Kayla Johnson, I run nonprofit building you, I'm a wardrobe, a lot of you know me, some of you don't, but I started a nonprofit with his support in 2022, thank you Irma for giving me my first platform, but I'm here tonight to support her because she needs help with her vision that she's sharing with you, it's epic, and it would be very epic for Irma to get involved with this, but I'm speaking to let you know that I am offering her my venue, no charge, so I just wanted to put that out there for you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, good job. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none here? We'll move to our discussion section, I don't think we have anything, anybody got anything for this general discussion? All right, next will be executive session. Town council may act on items discussed in the executive session after returning from the executive session. We're going in for a legal matter, discussing, discussion regarding the water walk lawsuit, and secondarily, as amended, personnel matters. A motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, we're in executive session, we will. Folks, we're in executive session, we will.
We don't need all that kickback.
Really? Have you, have you tried walking there? Tried walking there one day.
What I like.
You can change it.
I can change it off, and I used to go down the hill, I don't come up the hill.
It's amazing, I love people who do. Mr. Mayor?
How are you?
Yeah.
One year now.
Yeah, that's right. What you do? They're going to add a thing for, for getting a new public record. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
I thought we could do police chief. Like what I do now, man, I don't know. I mean, I just, I just got us $132,000. We're paying $14,000 for 20 regulars. It's unbelievable.
Yes. So that path is made out of a different surface than asphalt? Everybody, it's engineered aggregate.
Kind of like a cushion?
Yes. I'll give you a good example. Deputy Cannon, Marshall County.
Yeah.
He walks it all the time.
Really?
Yeah, he gets.
Man, this is so much easier on my knees. He's a big dude.
Big guy, yeah.
He's huge.
That's true. That's true.